First item is we have meeting minutes for February 19th, 2019. Have you had a chance to review?
They are not in the packet. Those will be carried over to next meeting.
All right, we'll table that. First item, I'd just like to, we had a brief discussion at the last meeting, but we didn't truly have it on the agenda, so we brought it back to this meeting for Lions Club Car Show that they're looking to do in September. It's an annual event they've been doing a long time. So it's now on the agenda for us to review and vote to approve the special permit request. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We grant permission for the Lions Club Car Show as outlined on their proposal.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right, done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. It's an event I think many people look forward to in town, so I appreciate the continued effort by the Lions Club. All right, the big event tonight is discussions about the host community agreement. The Board of Selectmen had also reached out to the planning board and they agreed to attend. We're looking for, first, we'll kind of start with inviting up Castle Rock Industries to do another quick summary of what you're planning, so that the planning board has a chance to hear it. The idea here, we don't have the bylaws in place, whether it's general bylaws or zoning bylaws. Our original intent with the general bylaw was to try to incorporate some of the planning board's potential special permit granting items that might be considered subjective and are not clear cut in the bylaw that they were proposing, to see if they might be able to review something at this stage of the process, so that business developers, et cetera, might have a chance to know what to expect prior to going into the state applying for state licensure. So in the vein of what we were proposing under that bylaw and that process, we are inviting them in and seeing if they could work with us in the process of the host community agreement. So unless anybody else on the board has something to say, I would like to give the floor to Castle Rock Industries.
Thank you. My name is Tom Egan. I am the CEO of Castle Rock. I'm here with my attorney, Brian Falk, came to answer any questions that were particularly in the legal realm. But besides being the CEO of Castle Rock, who I am is, I am ER doc by profession. I live on Walnut Hill Road with my wife, two of our kids, and two dogs. And what we propose to do is farm marijuana on a small part of our land. Works out to be 2.3 acres. 1.7% of our land, our total land area is 103.4 acres. We have a couple of hay fields. The vast majority of our land is heavily watered. The area where we want to grow marijuana is out in the woods. We looked a year ago at what Barry would find acceptable for outdoor growing, and we realized that we have the right place to do that. We are convinced that you will not see us, you will not smell us, you will not hear us, we will not be a detriment to the town, and we hope to be a benefit to the town. And I'd like to add one other thing and explain why we chose to come now, when these bylaws weren't done. We were ready to come last fall, but we waited for the special town meeting to see what would happen there. And the bylaws, which, they had some issues, but they're clearly really strong bylaws, both from the Board of Selectmen's side and the planning board's side. And I think attorney Falk would agree with me, because I looked and I looked hard, if and hopefully when these bylaws pass, largely in the form they're in now, Barry will have some of the strongest laws in Massachusetts regarding marijuana. It's phenomenal, the effort that's been put in here. And to come when the bylaws haven't been finalized, we worried that people would perceive it the wrong way, find it offensive. And we think the opposite, because we've looked at the substance of the bylaws that have been worked on, and we are fully prepared to work within that framework. And either in the summer, those bylaws will come to pass substantially, as they are now, or they won't come to pass at all. But marijuana will still be legal in Barry. And for us, there were two big reasons to come down. We're not an, we don't want to be an indoor operation. We're going to grow it outdoors. In an indoor operation, you control the entire life cycle of that plant, and you can decide how many crops you grow in a year. In an outdoor operation, you're going to get one or two. And if we were to wait until the bylaw passes or doesn't pass this summer, that could make the difference between us being in business in 2020 versus 2021. That's the business, but that's also community impact payments to Barry, property taxes to Barry, and jobs for people that live in Barry. We live in Barry, and we want to do this, but we want to do it in a way that is the right way for the town. And I have one other large concern that drove me to come now, which is, if these bylaws don't pass this summer, marijuana is still going to be legal in Barry. And again, I think my attorney would agree with me. This is going to be a multi-billion dollar industry in this state in a matter of a couple of years. And there's a lot of big money coming in from out of state. And they're going to be, I think, looking for communities where it's legal, but don't have a strong regulatory structure. And I think that us doing this now, when it comes to vote on this in the summer, the planning board, the Board of Selectmen, the study subcommittee can say, we have a second host community agreement in Barry that was negotiated with these regulations in mind, and we need to pass this, and then Barry will have the strength and the capability to say to outside interests, these are the regulations that you'll work under. And look at the two HCAs that we've negotiated, CPC Barry and Castle Rock. They're both with companies run by people who are grounded in this community. So my biggest fear is that all three of the boards will think that we came now for the wrong reasons, and I promise you, we didn't. And that's my initial statement to everyone here, but if I can be allowed to say one more thing, to really understand who we are, what we want to do, why we want to do it, and why we think will be good for Barry, it's going to take a lot longer than the 10 minutes I've been graciously allowed here. And I brought with me flyers with my contact information on them, my phone number, my email. And I invite everyone in this room, even if you're not on a committee, send me a text, send me an email. I promise you, I will get back to you in 48 hours. Come to my house, sit at my dining room table with me and my wife for an hour, and let us tell you really in a lot more detail what we want to do. And then take a walk out into the woods with me and see where we're going to do it. And then you can make up your own minds, whether you think this is a good thing or a bad thing, but wherever you fall out on it, I'll do whatever I can to help you make a fully informed decision. So I have these. If you want to call me, I'm happy to talk to anyone in this room at length, whether you're in favor of marijuana or against it. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
The Board of Selectmen has seen them before, so I didn't know if the planning board has any questions or anything specific you'd like to bring up now. You're also, any of you are welcome to come forward and grab anything closer to sit at if you'd like, rather than back row of the room. Yes, Doug?
I have a few comments on the host community agreement proposal.
Yeah.
If you want to go through those.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I did is I went through the host community agreement. I've got just a handful of comments, so if I can just...
Oh, yeah, this is perfect. I appreciate you being able to take the time to look ahead.
Yeah, and I'm glad, you understand, we voted on a marijuana bylaw that didn't pass at the town meeting, and so we have another town meeting in June, and we hope to pass one at that time. There's a description here of the property. When we get a little further down the road, I'd like to see a map, you know, a good map showing roads and houses and that sort of thing. There's a map in here, but it's a Google map with lots of dark colors on it, so I'd like to see that. And also, I'd like to say, I think what you're doing is, the fact that you guys live on the property, I think mitigates a whole lot in your favor. I think that's a good thing. I'm glad to see that. Yeah, I mean, you've got a lawyer, right?
We do.
It talks in payments, I don't have any page numbers on here, but in payments, it talks about submitting an annual payment. The Castle Rock should submit financial records to Barry with a certification of gross sales. And I just put a note on here, assuming that means an audited financial report.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we feel that we need to provide proof that Barry is getting what they expect to get. So you need to be able to see the relevant part of the books to prove that we have no problem with that.
Okay, good. And then you have a section here about hiring of Barry residents, and I wanted to tell you, I think that's another really positive thing. We appreciate, we appreciate you guys making the commitment to do that.
Sir, as you say, you noted that we live here. My wife, I lived in Worcester for 20 years, and my wife grew up in the country, and we risked a lot. We made a big decision to come here, buy that land, build a house here. My kids go to Roseland. If we receive permission to do this, and we do it wrong, it's, that's, we're going to do it right, and we're going to be accountable. You don't like what we're doing, come knock on my door, because I live there.
Okay, good. There's a section here on security, and it doesn't have a whole lot of details about how the security will be provided, but I just made a note, I'd like to recommend that we have the chief of police or some, his designee, take a look at the security plan, and we'll get to that point, and, you know, and then give us some feedback on that. Because I'm no...
Are you suggesting feedback, or someone actually has a level of approval in that process?
However you want to do it. I mean, this is your host community agreement, but I think somebody that has some experience with security issues should take a look at it. The planning board doesn't have that kind of expertise, so... There's a clause in here about assignment, and it says, "This agreement may be assigned by Castle Rock to a different entity only with the written consent of Barry." I wonder who that written consent would come from? Would that be the selectman? And also, I think that if the agreement's ever assigned, there should be some notifications, and I would recommend a public hearing, too.
I missed what section?
Section, it's section 12.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's about page five or six here.
Okay.
And these are, these are just recommendations.
Yeah.
We should specify who the written consent would come from.
If either Board of Selectmen, as referred to, page one.
As an addendum to the HCA.
This just says the written consent of Barry.
Yeah, it's just in page one where it says, refers town of Barry as municipal corporation, Massachusetts. It's duly authorized Board of Selectmen, so that's who it's referring back to.
I got you.
And that's the only comments I had on the host community agreement. And I can, I can give you copies of these if you want that.
Actually, if you don't mind, that would be that way in case we wrote our notes wrong.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Sure, I'll do that.
What is a possible, I mean, I've got a copy of this.
Yes, yes.
Attend to your concerns.
I'm not a, I don't want to say I'm 100% confident in this, but based on my review of what was presented, it sounds like he's pretty much working within your proposed zoning bylaw for outdoor cultivation anyway, based on size of the lot, distance from occupied, all that stuff. I thought fit what you were already hoping for, anyway.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like that we meet that, as far as visibility for roads and that sort of thing. So, you know, just not having been out there and looked at it, but it would appear to be so. And it's not a, it's not a big area. It's a pretty small area within a fairly large acreage, so...
Okay. Hopefully, the next couple steps we take in the process might confirm just that, because if I'm correct, this was like an introductory, bring the planning board in, and then we'll go into public hearings after?
Right, we have one public hearing at the next meeting to go over the proposal and any other comments that we get, that we had, we have a working meeting to incorporate any comments that we did get, any changes, one more meeting to look over the final agreement, and then that final agreement will be brought forward to a final public hearing.
So that is generally the process we are proposing to work with the planning board on, so that we can maintain the strength of the town's bylaws that you guys are proposing, but also give the developer or someone the knowledge of what that may be prior to them investing in the state application process, just to find out, they come back and you're like, oh, but I need this, and they're like, well, I didn't expect that. Does anybody else here have any more questions on the Castle Rock HCA proposal? Look for any more information? Yes, Sneaker?
I have one question regarding odor, since there's a lot of discussion regarding odor within both the bylaws. And you stated that it's an agriculture site, but you don't expect to have an odor concern. Can you explain to us how?
Based on where it is, I mean, it is deep in the woods. It's surrounded by 100-foot tall trees for hundreds of yards in every direction. And with outdoor cultivation facilities, the number one thing is where you cite it. You know, it's so far away that it's highly unlikely that you're going to smell it. There's only really two points in a growth cycle, anyway, where odor is a big issue. And there are, there are actually ways to mitigate outdoor odor. Probably the two biggest ways, there's a theory of agriculture where meats and complementary crops that have competing odors, and they cancel each other out. There are also actually mechanical ways that like, for lack of a better term, garbage dumps have to mitigate odors as well, and it can be done, but based on where it's cited, I think it's highly unlikely. And again, I welcome you, anyone in this room, come take a look and let me know what you think, because I understand that I have to address people's concerns, and I will. Sure?
Yes, Dennis. There's one of them right next to you, and he brought them to the last meeting. I don't, but I'll let Tom explain how far he's gone with the rest.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear the question.
Have you approached your rebutting neighbors on your project?
Some of them, not all of them yet. My, the immediate neighbors on Walnut Hill, Walnut Hill Road, most of them I have, with the exception of one, I believe. But there are also people on 62, like way, way through the woods, that technically abut the back of my property, and I have not had a chance to talk to them yet.
Anybody else? Yes, Ken?
Just a technical question. Castle Rock is a movie company, so is there a problem with that?
I don't think so. There's actually a lot of companies in Massachusetts that do various things that are called Castle Rock. There is not, to my knowledge, a Castle Rock agricultural enterprise that we would compete with. The way we came up with the name is, our property has two big hayfields that come right down on the road. And I want to make clear, we're not growing in the hayfields. We're talking way, way back in the woods. But at the crest of one of the hayfields is a giant rock that probably, I don't know, weighs 50 tons, I don't know how you would move it. And my kids like to climb on this rock, and it's worth it, too. We gave it a name for our company and became Castle Rock for the rock under the field.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions about the proposed outdoor cultivation facility? Yes, Kurt?
That property that you bought is the old Rice Estate.
Pardon me, sir?
The old Rice?
Yes.
Estate?
It is.
If you go all the way to the top of the hill and that down over the backside, there's an old field in there that's grown up. It used to be called a milk bottle field.
And that is, that's our proposed site. And for what it's worth, sir, you're familiar, we've met before, you're familiar with the land. We are going to leave the outline of the site, the stone walls that were around it, they're going to stay. And in terms of branding, our company is called Castle Rock Agricultural Enterprises, but if we succeed in doing this, the marijuana that we grow, the brand name will be Milk Bottle Organics, after the field. And we chose that spot for several reasons. One, it is, as you know, way out there. You're not going to see it, you're not going to smell it. The soil is very good, and the trees within that boundary are probably 95% pine, and they're weevil infested. So the trees are really only good for wood chips. So it all just sort of came together that that would be the spot.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I appreciate you taking the time to come and help answer some more questions.
Well, we very much appreciate you guys having us and entertaining our proposal.
I expect that the board, as well as the planning board, will do some continued discussion, so that we'll go to the public hearing, we'll get some more feedback from anybody in the general public that didn't make tonight's meeting, or et cetera. And then we're going to want to sit down and really try to hash out what hopefully is the final HCA that we can move forward with. I don't expect everything brought up tonight is the only thing we'll be talking about, but it's a good start. Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you for inviting the planning board to be a part of this.
You're welcome. And thank you for coming. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to raise one point. We're trying to adhere to the general, the proposed general bylaw as close as possible. There was one requirement in there that Tom and I were talking about, was that there'd be a sign erected on a site in advance of the hearings. Given the time of year and given the timing, I don't think we're going to be able to do that. We just wanted to raise that to your attention. The bylaw, I call it a sign. Or at least by... At least not do it in time for the next hearing, because that's precisely 14 days to go.
Right. Well, this wasn't, first public hearing, was it? This was just our joint board hearing. The first official public hearing.
Right, we still technically, we have two public hearings to go.
So we're still not even to that point.
What's your...
I'm just saying, we're not even, you didn't have to have...
Do you have concerns doing it at all, or just the timeline of getting it done before the last public hearing?
A little bit of both, because it's supposed to be up, per the general bylaw, which again, isn't in effect, it's there. It's supposed to be up 14 days before the first hearing. You know, we're 14 days away right now. Given the time of year, I don't think it's realistic we'll be able to get a sign in in time. We do have some concerns about doing a sign there, it's a residential property. We have some concerns that there would be a misconception, the sign is there, people see the field right behind it and think that's where the marijuana is going to go. And as we discussed, it's not even more close to the location on the property. So we just wanted to raise that with you before we broke up tonight.
I was thinking the same thing. Is the sign, should it really be at the road, or should it be on the site? And if it's at the site, then in this case, no one's going to see it anyways. The idea is to let people know this is where it's going to be, and if you put the sign up and no one sees it, it's almost irrelevant at this point.
Yeah.
We really don't want people thinking that we're going to be...
I don't either. I don't, I don't either. That's my concern. If we put a sign up where they can see it in the road, people are going to think it's, this is a site of it visibly, and it's not. And I don't want to give that misconception, because that's going to start a lot of problems.
I don't disagree, and partly, it might have been an extra layer that may not be necessary, because we are working on a two-public hearing process, which is one more step than the state required, anyway, from my understanding.
I'd be inclined to waive the sign.
And by putting the sign up, you do more than just make the public aware, sometimes you may actually make yourself a target for somebody that flat out just doesn't care for the industry for any reason, and it doesn't matter. So, I don't know, do you guys believe a sign should still happen?
I would make a motion, we don't require the sign in this case.
What's the motion?
That we don't require the signage in this case.
Okay, I'll second that. All right. Any further discussion from, yes, Claire?
Yeah, is there some way, if the sign was put on the road, to designate where the plot is, that it's not there?
It's possible, but it does a couple things. It still doesn't alleviate the fact that it may make, it identify them as a potential victim to, I'm not thinking of the right word, but if somebody just doesn't like marijuana, all of a sudden, it's like, let's go damage the sign, or go, just for whatever reason. I'm not suggesting anybody in this room, but we just know there are people like that.
That's my wife's concern, seeing it's residential.
And I know on residential, it's probably even worse than commercial, because that's also where your family lives. also where your family lives.
And it might encourage trespassing as well, for people who wanna go up and try to find where it's gonna be, which we don't wanna encourage people to start walking the woods in their property, that's nasty.
It kinda does imply, hey, it's gonna be here, and since I'm telling you, come take a look, which is not necessarily what the signs intended when I had brought up the concept. The concept was just to help make sure that nobody thinks we're slipping something through and just getting it done before the town has a, a chance to know about it. I know that there's a lot of people in town that are afraid that that process could occur. That's why we said we need the second public hearing, that's why we talked about putting the sign up. I think for those that are truly interested, this two-public hearing should be enough to get the word out. If you're not paying attention, then it's hard for me to say that it's our fault at that point. Yes, Niker?
Is there a way to make it so that there's a public sign someplace where people would see it, like on the town common, or on the solar sign, or someplace where people would see it, so you could say, it's not on his property, or you're not targeting his property, but it is a place where people would see it?
Are you suggesting just like, a public hearing for a host community agreement?
Yeah.
Is being held on such and such a day?
Yeah.
What if we put that on the sign board for a certain timeframe before the meeting?
The solar sign, the sign board, you mean?
Yep.
I'm fine with that, as long as it's still working, obviously. To, to commit us to that and then all of a sudden have the batteries go again or something, it may look like a, it'd be unintentional, I'm sure, but then all of a sudden, people are like, oh, how convenient. You know, I don't want that to happen again, where all of a sudden the sign doesn't go up and now they think, oh, they are trying to slip it through. So, I'm, I'm being devil's advocate here, I'm just trying to think it through, I don't wanna set something up and then find out that it just sets us up for failure.
If it's available, we place it on the sign board.
I'm more than willing to do that.
For a week prior to the meeting.
And that would be more of an internal policy that we would be handling.
And I would think a week is plenty, I don't wanna put it up there for two weeks.
Well, it's no, two weeks is fine, because it's a, public hearings are two-week notice anyway, so putting it on there for two weeks, or putting it in the newspaper two weeks ahead of time.
Fair enough.
But I wouldn't do more than two weeks, I would just do it along the lines of the public hearing. I would also keep it generic, it's just, it's not gonna name the company's name, it's just gonna bring it up, if you want more information, you can come to the board of selectmen's office, town administrator's office. And if at that point, in this case, Tom has offered a flyer with contact info and he's publicly stated, contact him if you wanna see it. When we have companies that are offering that, we'll share it. But if they're not, we can only go so far with that, because I don't know how much we can force them to allow non-board members to take a look at their property, in reviewing applications and efforts to develop. So, I don't know if that's something we think we should try to require, but I, again, I think most of that is something that should be more of a, they submit a piece of paper, a pamphlet, a proposal. If you're not on a board and they're not allowing just all the general public to come take a look anytime, you're gonna have to rely on the report and the maps and et cetera that are provided. I think Doug's right, and maybe in the future, we'll put that into our general bylaw, even saying, host community agreement proposal shall include such and such a map. So it's much easier to do a quick review to see if it's gonna fit without having to get too deep into competitive meetings where we're saying, well, now we need this, now we need this. This way, the planning board might be able to look at it right away and say, it does, it doesn't fit our bylaw, or intended bylaw in this case.
So I'll give you a motion that we advertise this, the meeting, the public hearing on the sign board for two weeks prior to the meeting.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? And I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Did we vote on not requiring the onsite sign?
We did.
Okay, thank you. I just couldn't recall, we had a lot of...
We did vote, didn't we?
No, we just talked about it a lot, and then we went to a whole different motion.
So we, we motioned a second, so we didn't, I thought we...
I let a motion die and I should've just...
Sandy, did we, did we vote on that? I thought we did.
Right. Let's just start again on that motion.
Well, let's see if we did.
No, you have a motion that you didn't need the sign for the public hearing.
The, the sign on the site, oh, we didn't vote on, right?
We didn't vote, did we?
No.
Okay.
So we had a motion within a motion. Now we're gonna go back to the original motion. Do you...
It was a motion to not require the signage on the, on the land.
On the land.
For this application.
No, second. Uh, any further discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the assistance, Brad. Yes, Ralph?
Is that just for this particular case, or do you wanna take another article on?
I think it makes sense to revise the, the general bylaw that we were proposing that would require that signage onsite. I think the discussion tonight makes sense, because we don't need to get to that level, but...
If, if it's a, if it's a commercial location, I see no harm in the signage being there, people can say, this is where it's gonna be, but because this is private property, because it's remote, I wanted it off tonight, but I, I think, we leave it in the bylaw and we can do a case-by-case removal as we see fit in the, in the host agreement. Because this, this time it fits not to have it, but if this was strictly a commercial site, an industrial site, there's no harm in letting people see it's gonna go here.
Might be less harm, I wouldn't say no harm, but...
Less harm, but given the fact, this is private property, people live there, this is deep in the woods, we don't want trespassing, so, plot through agreements and not, reasons to not have it, so.
So I'd take that into consideration too, when you guys keep working your recommendations.
Could say something about as, as long as it's reasonable to do so, we'd like it posted.
Yes, Kathy?
Just one question, is the property in sixty-one A?
Um, it is, but that portion of the property won't come up.
Thank you.
Sure.
And that's part of the increased property tax and real estate tax benefit that we might get from it. I don't know what increase that is, it's a number I haven't crunched. Anybody have any further questions, comments on this proposed outdoor facility? All right, thank you very much, I'd like to close this item.
Thank you. All right. That's what happens.
Thank you.
It's coming again.
Yeah.
I just signed a hundred minutes, so.
Do we have a motion to electronic sign too, were there two motions?
Yes.
There were two motions and two votes. So we approved the electronic sign.
Two weeks prior.
And...
Two weeks prior, yeah?
Yeah. To fit the public hearing requirement.
Yeah.
And then the onsite one was the one we said we don't need.
For this, but I understand the reason for that, so people can say, oh, this is where the proposed site is for marijuana, and that's one thing, if it's, you know, gonna build a building, it's view from the road, that's the time we wanna see it. If it's visible from the road, we want that signage so they know. If you can't see it from the road, the signage, I think, is ridiculous requirement for, it makes no sense.
But then it also depends on what you're seeing, if it's just a building, what are you seeing?
Right. This is where the building will be.
Should your neighbor, should you have to put a sign up saying you're building a house? That's what I mean, it's hard to know.
But because it's marijuana, because it is a drug, it's like an alcohol facility or any kind of production plant, people want it.
They don't have to put those signs up.
But you have to put a sign if you're gonna operate a wetland, so, like what they, what you, what...
Well, you gotta put up the DEP notices and the permit numbers.
Right, and I think that's more along the lines of what we're talking about, three by four signs.
You don't have to do it if you're putting up a brewery, you don't have to do it if you're selling alcohol, and that's how the state views the comparisons, more likely than wetlands. But I'm with you, I see the other argument, I'm just...
I think that was, that was...
Thanks for coming. If we're lucky, we'll see how it plays out.
If, if, if we don't have the signage requirement and sometime we'd like to see one, we have very close. The signage requirement's there, we can keep saying, yep, nope, 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 and not to... But it gives us the option to require it someplace where we think it may be fitting, if that occurs. If it doesn't occur, we just don't do it. A lot of times, I don't think it's gonna be relevant.
And that's something we should be able to decide early enough, when they first come to us and say we'd like to, before we even schedule the...
What type, location, impact, yeah. The neighbors, it's gonna be, the neighbors are relevant, they're gonna be notified anybody, someone driving down the road, doesn't matter, they have, don't have, just get in the game, as they say.
Okay. Primarily, everything else we have on here is administrative. So what I would like to do is still hold those to the end and come back to public comment. Do we have any public comments? Give the floor to Lucy Allen.
Thank you. I originally asked to speak with you back on February fifteenth, because we'd had a string of problems with Stetson, with security breaches. A fourteen-year-old boy stealing, stealing a car, late January, in my neighborhood. One boy, twelve-year-old, February eleventh, three older teenagers the next day. And then, I requested to see you then, but then we had another incident just this past Friday night, with a fifteen-year-old who eloped.
Lengthy incident.
Yeah. So I'm here because I'm not here to rehash everything we've talked about with Stetson. We all know what's gone on, what some of the issues are. I know you're working on a plan, that's not the issue. The issue is that the people don't know you're working on a plan. And I know that you may not be able to say much about it yet, but the public needs some reassurance that this is just not, oh, this is what's gonna be going on from now on, a kid a week getting out, fourteen-year-olds stealing cars and driving them from Berry to Okam. That's just not something that people in this town can live with. And I do know that because of what Stetson School is, it's a private special education school, who it's governed by, who the town is, that it's not easy to have a dialogue, and I know you're in a tough spot. I've been there, I've worked for the city of Worcester for many years doing that kind of work. I know there are ways to do it. Some of the things that Stetson Seven Hills has said in their responses and the publicity of these runaways, they're taking it as a town and gown issue. That is, we are universities, the argument that colleges and universities give when they come into a town, they use a lot of resources, they don't pay real estate taxes, and it's a strain on the town. And believe me, if you look at Worcester with thirty thousand...
Jack, sorry, Lucy. We can't have that sign in the window if you're gonna shut the door, but we can ask them to, uh, sorry.
Sure. So Worcester has about thirty thousand college kids there, with, as you know, a number of colleges and universities. If you've ever followed the news, you've got Holy Cross College especially, huge neighborhood problems. People not able to live in their homes because of the, you know, the living conditions and the noise and the disruptions. I'm not saying it's exactly the same as Stetson, but there have, there's been a lot of movement toward developing ways to work with private schools and universities. And I believe that Stetson is inviting the town to look at them that way. I don't think it's a really fair way of looking at it, because they don't have what a university has to offer, but that's, their, some of their arguments lead us to look that way. But, you know, what I'm looking for is that we all are going in one direction, and I want it to be through the board. But people in town don't hear that, they don't, you know, I don't have cable TV because of my location, I can't get it. I watched last, two weeks ago meeting, using the internet on YouTube. A lot of people don't have high-speed internet coverage, it's not the way to reach everybody. And I know that everybody does not agree that Facebook is a very good thing for people to use, but it is a way to gauge public reaction to events. I'm talking about the police department Facebook notification of the March first runaway or elopement. You know, there were two-hundred-sixty-nine shares by people to their own sites. The fire department also had it, Berry Community and Vince. There were a total of three-hundred shares as of this morning, and many, many comments. Most of them are angry with Stetson, but some are also angry with the select board for not communicating, for not reassuring people that something's being done. And if you look at the many, many comments, and I'm sure you can imagine what some people are thinking, could be done to resolve this. Going outside of the town, the board, and having it out of the control, making your job that much more difficult. So I'm begging you, please, start paying more attention to what the public sentiment is. Just because they're not contacting you, doesn't mean people aren't feeling this. People feel very deeply, especially people who've lived here all of our lives, because this is an institution that we've grown up with. And this is really very, very disturbing for people to see the change from Stetson Home to what we have now. Some people are concerned that the boys aren't being treated well, and that's why they're running away. There are a lot of things out there. And I know that you can't, can't say we're going to do something, you can't make promises, but in government, you have to get the job done. It doesn't matter how hard it is, or how many roadblocks. How would you like to work with the city of Flint, Michigan, and have that contaminated water issue? There is always a way to get something done. There are people in this town that have some experience and resources in these matters, including myself, which I've offered some insights, I'd be happy to. But there's usually more than one way of looking at things. And I'm just asking you, please, you know, make it easier, more approachable for people to contact the town with their concerns. Have somebody empathetic and responsive say, well, you're right, we're gonna do something about this, you can tell us what's worrying you. You know, people are afraid there's gonna be a tragedy, an accident, a property owner who gets panicked, some people go crazy when that helicopter's overhead. So I'm begging you, please, work with the public more, please be a little more amenable to having us involved, because, especially those of us that live nearby, we're the ones that are getting the brunt of this. You know, there's a lot of homes for sale, Kendall Street, South Street, James Street, and there's a reason, there are some people who regret recently having bought houses in this town. That is going to impact a lot of things, a lot of people. So please, that's, that's what I have to say.
I appreciate it, I really do. And for me, and I don't wanna speak for Greg or Charlie on this, but for me, I apologize that despite our ongoing efforts, it wasn't very public. And it wasn't easy for people to know that we're still, this was not something we forgot about, despite it not always being on the agenda and us not always talking about it. And I definitely want anybody that ever has a question to feel extremely comfortable, whether you catch me on the street or on the sidewalk, or you come right through the town administrator's office, or use my town email address, whatever manner you feel comfortable and you wanna reach out and to express your feelings. And no, you don't have to worry about whether you think, I think your feelings are valid or not, because they're valid, because they're yours. I, I'm not gonna begrudge anybody a feeling that they have on it. So, I don't think I did a good job in that regard, letting people know that despite sometimes I get frustrated, because I still have failed to make the progress I was hoping, that maybe sometimes that comes out and makes it seem like I'm not as open to hearing from the people that, and so, for me, that's an apology from me.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if you or Charlie would like to speak on this at all?
We talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, and I obviously have some very harsh ways I wanna deal with, I could say, I mean, I wanna look into imposing fines, I want to, I'm frustrated they haven't tried to do more, frustrated that they're not looking at their policies. And I don't blame the staff, I, I, you know, the staff, they're workers, they pay to do the job, they do what they can. If they're understaffed and the policy and procedures aren't right, this is gonna keep happening. I said it's a draw on our, on our services, our police services, and it's part of why I justify charging for. Now, specifically Friday, gentlemen, during that elopement, we had a structured fire in our town, which normally requires one or two police officers to go there and do traffic. We have, you know, a lot of operations going on the fire ground, it's not safe for the public, and not safe for the firemen, to have traffic without police there. We didn't have them available, we had one officer from mutual aid out of town come in for that, because our offices were tied up with this, as well as other towns as well.
I, I'm aware of that.
So in this case, it just impacted the public safety for personnel on the fire ground and people passing that scene. The, the need to look at this empirically is, I think, real. I've been messaging with Chief Carbone, and he's trying to get some numbers together, he can't not give me visits per address, but he can give me total visits to the town for the year, and average it per home and... and average it per home and say it's an average of one visit per ten homes, and how many times you've gone to Stetson. And he can also give us a report of how many times they've gone to Stetson, as well as Ruggles and the high school slash middle school. So we compare schools to schools, and we compare residents to the, because it is a home. It's not a school officially, it's a home now. So we can compare it to other residential addresses on average. We can't get it case by case because we don't have it for every address. He gets, his calls are logged by street.
With the SRO, is he able to differentiate the SRO doing something while onsite at the high school versus being called in separately?
I didn't ask that, but what we did ask him for, I believe what I asked him for when I was here is, no, I don't care about when the SRO's there doing his daily thing. I care about when we have to call and divert police there separately, which at Stetson is usually not one, it's two or three. It's a two-car response, he said.
My only point is, the SRO was already assigned to that building permanently, so-
Which is something to consider.
Your numbers aren't gonna balance if he's actually dealing with stuff while he's on there, because you can't say he was called there, he's already there.
But if he was dealing with stuff, then every time he does at Stetson, that would be two vehicles. We need a second officer, because they don't go alone.
No, you're missing my point, you can't compare the call numbers.
I'm saying even if the, even if the SRO had ten incidences, if that was at Stetson, that would require twenty, you know, twenty officers, not, not ten. They double, every time they go to Stetson, they send two, they don't send one. But I, but I know, yes, it's things the SRO probably deals with. We don't know how often, we can ask him that and look into that as well. But once again, we're comparing the visits to a twelve-hundred-student school to an eighty-population home. That's, you know, you should see fifteen times the rate, is what the exact math came to, so it's, it's very disproportionate. But maybe it's, it's, you know, we're gonna need to get back to our state legislators, we're gonna have to get them- They're governed and restricted by the state, and they get a lot of state pupils there, or assignments. But there's gotta be a way to maybe require with so many students with these number of incidences to get the state to say they're gonna have to have their own resource officer onsite, or some type of security. And that's, you know, it's a lot tougher than just having some security and cameras and paying attention. But if they're refusing to take the simple steps we've suggested, it might be time to, you know, up the game a little bit and go to the state and look for assistance in, in finding a way to require them to have an officer. And, you know, obviously any bylaw we write that says that's gonna have to get approved by the state. So if we can't get the legislatures on this, on board with it, we're not gonna pass it. But I think we need to reach out and talk to, talk to Ann and talk to Donnie and see what they think, what can we do.
Yes, Dean.
First of all, I wanna thank her for coming and bringing this up, because it's obviously pretty important in this town, what's going on right now. So in, with regard to the selectmen, I think these guys have actually been very pro, pro-legressive towards trying to address this. I know you sent a letter to Seven Hills, and you got a letter back from their attorney from Bowdoin-Dewey.
Yep.
Which is a very high-priced law firm in Worcester. Has the select board looked outside of town council for counsel on how to maybe address this? With maybe a, a law firm that might have more resources?
No. We've discussed it, we have not taken the action yet. Actually, it was a, I personally requested our labor counsel, who had mentioned that he's worked these cases before in his history. So he understood just the steps and the pathways you kinda gotta get through. He said he was gonna look to see if he can find someone that he knows that might be willing to help the town. He had mentioned that he's actually working a similar case in a different town to help that town with a different, similar company. And because of that, he didn't wanna step his toes into two different ones. That's what I had heard, so I'm just looking on that side. And I was hoping to follow up with Andrew and actually talk to the board of selectmen to see what their thoughts are on that. So, I mean, this is just where we're at now, I hadn't even had a chance to really talk to the board of selectmen yet.
And not knowing your process, but I wonder what it would take to engage a very serious, knowledgeable, powerful law firm to take a look at this.
Well, that's the other part, we don't know the costs. We need to not only find somebody, but we need to know what they're willing, what they're suggesting it might cost us to even get started.
And, but we are on the other side getting a sense of the costs to mitigate this stuff.
Right, but I would suspect the law firm costs would be something in the neighborhood of four or five hundred dollars an hour.
Sure.
And probably someone could put a hundred hours or so into this easily, so-
Sure.
It gets pretty expensive at fifty thousand dollars just to look into it, so-
Might be worth it.
It might be, but we need to find out how extreme that's gonna be before we jump into that. And there's no guarantee a hundred hours, does it?
I understand, but if not, in six years, we're gonna be having the same conversation.
Exactly.
Actually on a greater scale.
Well, this is why, the steps we started with is figuring out how much time they are taking, which the chief is starting to log that, how much time they're taking, what kind of resources they're taking. And then we just saw, as I saw through the structured fire, how that impacted public safety. We're starting to find ways to gather that information and quantify the expense.
I understand, but Greg, that, that letter that Bowdoin-Dewey sent back, that was offensive.
It was.
That was offensive to this town.
It was.
That was basically, you guys go yourselves, you're not gonna do anything about it.
I think we spoke rather harshly of it when we read it.
Yeah. So if there might be a way to, and I understand Jim's, you know, Jim's town council, he's been here for a very long time, but this might not be his expertise, and maybe it might be time to consider spending that money to get somebody in here who can take care of this, or take a look at it, and not just be a semi-expert.
Well, and before we spend that money, this is a new issue, this would have to go before the town for approval to spend that money. We can't, we couldn't just unilaterally spend fifty thousand dollars on material.
Could that be on a town warrant in June?
It, it could be, but we need to get an idea what that dollar one's gonna be before we do it.
And double it in a town warrant, my guess is most people would say.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, at least double it.
Okay. Claire, you have something?
I've got a question. When a outfit like this comes into town, like when Stetson first came, of course, it was small, it was a home. The kids ate dinner with the people running the home, kids were great. When it starts growing, isn't there some kind of permit or contract with the town?
No. The only thing they have to do is build within the zoning bylaws that exist. Everything else is done through state regulation and the size and the quantity and the type of business, and- It's a state-regulated thing, not a local regulation.
You know what I'm saying, it's a home, but it's a hundred kids, a home that doesn't have a hundred kids in it.
It's not a house, it's a group home. It's regulated by the state.
You still have to have some kind of permitting thing. Somebody can't just stop taking in a whole bunch of-
The permit they get is an occupancy permit from the building department saying you built it according to code and according to the local zoning bylaws. Done. At that point, it's the state regulates every operation of that. The state doesn't want local, because it's not standardized, each town will do it differently. And there's a lot of regulations that go in that I do understand why they're doing it that way. Okay, because a lot of these children do require special attention. And it's not just because they're violent or they're, it's because they don't know how to handle society, for whatever reason, whether it's a physical, mental issue that brought it to them, or just their own experiences have created fears and other issues. It's a, it's its own world, mental health is its own world. And because of that, they don't want boards of selectmen or planning boards trying to figure out how to regulate it, because that's not our specialty. So they take that out of our hands, because they knew we would screw it up.
They cannot go against the public people in this town that are supporting the town.
Who cannot?
And having them, the state or whoever.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, I didn't understand if you meant Stetson or if you meant the state.
Whoever, whoever is allowing this to be in our town.
Okay.
Don't we have a say as to what comes into our town?
I have suggested that we might-
We should.
Not in Massachusetts. I'm sorry, just keep that in mind, not in Massachusetts.
If they wanted to build a prison in town, wouldn't you be able to fight against it? Of course you would.
I have suggested that we consider zoning bylaw to restrict the number of dwellings on individual property. That a special permit be required after you exceed a certain number of dwellings. And that, and that permit would look at town resources and burdens before being granted another permit to build. And that could stop them from building more structures.
So no more good commands.
But that would need another zoning bylaw, we're still buried with other bylaws we haven't worked out yet.
That also can be worked around if they just cause everything to be in addition. So, I mean, you just gotta, you're right, but you gotta pay attention to how you word it.
And when you make an addition-
And I'm not trying to say you're wrong, I'm sorry.
The way the building codes change to take an older building and just slap an addition on it becomes very difficult and very costly. And if they're already utilizing it, it's, it's a much bigger challenge. So we even, even to, even, we could even include the zoning bylaw to add, to add bedrooms or add living quarters to, after so many dwellings. There's a way to phrase it to stop it, so we can stop the growth.
Prevent it from happening again.
That's, that was my suggestion, several months ago I suggested that, but we haven't entertained it well. We've been busy with the marijuana bylaws and the other things, we have limited time, we all work full-time. I don't know if you're full-time Charlie now, but we're all working. And we don't, you know, it's not like we have all day, every day to work on these things, but we, we do work on a lot of stuff.
And the only other thing I'd add to that is, it's a planning board thing most of the time. He's talking about zoning bylaws.
Right, it's not something we could do.
So we can ask the planning board, but I-
To affect the property would have to be a zoning bylaw, we can't force them to make a zoning bylaw.
But something that does have to be done.
Claire, I'm sorry, I just wanted to hear from Charlie on this.
Okay, that's okay, you're done.
Yep.
Yeah. I think part of the problem, and unlike the situation in Worcester, at least where I read it in the paper, with the colleges, at least the colleges as an administrative unit will meet with the city. These people would not come in and meet with the board, they'll meet with one of us.
Yes.
I met with them, and I think it helped a little bit, but, at least I hope it did. But therein lies part of the problem, I don't know what they're afraid of, but I don't think anybody's gonna come in here, you know.
I, I understand that.
And that is so frustrating to me, that they refuse, just refuse to meet, because they don't want the press, and I understand even some of the reporters for the D and G on occasion have had trouble getting, if you probably have heard.
Yes.
Yeah, getting news stories in the paper that might be construed to be negative. And they've had them in, and they've been taken out, and up and down on the internet or whatever they do. But, you know, this parent organization, Seven Hills, is dug in on this issue apparently. They're in transient, and they're, you know, but they have to, for us to act as a board, they have to meet with us at a board. You know, they, they apparently lack the courage to come in and do what you're doing right now and talk, speak with the board. And I find that extremely frustrating, because I think the board conducts itself in a businesslike manner, and we would treat them in a businesslike way, but we have a common problem here. In the last few weeks, it seems to have taken on a whole new level. You have to wonder if there's something drastically wrong up there that all these boys are taking off on.
May I say that that is a, a comment that quite a few people on Facebook have made, is that why are all of these kids, in the winter, three of them in a snowstorm? Why, you know, it's just like six kids in the past few weeks in the winter have left. One that came to my house, it was summer, this kid had bruises and scabs all over his body. And I reported that to the police as I was concerned for his welfare. It, it is something that, as much as I don't want one of them on my property or any of my, anybody else's property, I do care that they're being well-treated. And so, and I, I just wanna add to what, what you said. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to imply that you have not done anything, only that the public is not hearing that. And it's the public that needs to be reassured.
We, we can't change very much what they hear. Meetings are public, they're posted. When I see people commenting Facebook, I ask them to please come to our meeting. Voice of Concerns, the administrator, Aspie, in the meeting. You know, until, the other powers would be, until our state representatives, until Stetson School sees more public coming in to the meeting like you've done tonight, they just think I'm one or two people who have a problem with it. They don't understand it, they don't see all the comments we see. But if we can't get people to come out, it helps us if they come out and make a voice, and it helps us draw attention of the state.
But the other issue is that many of the people that would come aren't gonna come out at night. They're elderly, they're frightened, they don't wanna be on television, say, I'm ninety-odd years old, I live alone and I'm terrified. That's not good for them. So I am here representing those people that do not have the strength or the courage to come out and speak. And I understand what you're saying, but, you know, somebody who's that elderly on a winter night is not gonna come out.
They don't, they don't have to come, they could write a letter, make a phone call, send an email, reach out to the town administrator during the week to know we have another public complaint.
Yeah.
It can be anonymous, but we need those, we don't need, but it certainly helps if those come in, because the, the more leverage we have behind us, the more people we're representing in this, and we can demonstrate that. It will ease our process with the state when we try to look for these sanctions in the future.
Work on that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you again for taking the time, Lucy. Sam, did you have something you wanted to say on the subject?
Yes. I believe that the chief of police and the chief of fire, or maybe Andrew, knows that there's a school similar to Seven Hills in one of the surrounding towns. And I understand that that school pays the town, please don't quote me the number, but I thought I heard sixty-five thousand dollars a year for some security issues. So if they're able to do it, if they somehow negotiate it, then why can't Barry try to negotiate some financial assistance? Because no doubt, I don't know how much money we spend over there every month, but I'm sure it's significant. And I'm just hearing more and more, I heard something on the telephone the other night, that someone ran away. Now, I don't know what else had gone on, other than that, but I think that, do you know what school I'm speaking of?
I think so.
What's the name of the school?
Is it the one up in Rutland?
Yeah, what's the name of it?
Deveron, Deveron.
Yes, that's it.
It, it said that they pay the salary of the police officer for Rutland, I don't know if that's true, but that's what's said.
Well, if they do that, why can't Seven Hills do it?
Well, that's an assistance to, to pay the police officer.
Business model, that's the best way to answer that.
In and of itself, that just pays the officer, it doesn't stop the elopements. And we need to look towards stopping the elopements.
No, but it still costs us money.
Right.
And we can't afford any more money. Because as I said at a previous meeting-
The point being, the bigger issue-
The town of Barry is bleeding.
Let's not get back and forth too much here, let, let Greg have a moment.
The bigger issue isn't, isn't to, you know, put a Band-Aid on the wound, is to stop getting cut. And, you know, getting some fees and paying for one of our officers to recoup some of the money we're losing isn't gonna stop the fact, they, they need changes in, in how they govern those kids. They need procedural changes, they need process changes. And if we have to take steps to make them change, that's, that's what we need to focus on. I wouldn't turn down money for an officer, but-
Wouldn't turn down money in the interim.
But I don't see, I don't see just paying for an officer helping, because as I said, the burden isn't just the officer, it's when we have a structured fire and that officer's gone, we're, we're losing our public service and we are paying for it.
I'm not saying that in lieu of anything else. I'm just saying, maybe we could get that to start with and work on the other things at the same time. That's all.
Noted. I will tell you my experience with that. I went to the city of Worcester, who has a lot more Seven Hills properties throughout it. And I went to the assessor's office, and I asked about any history of pilots, et cetera, or other payment agreements. And they said, it doesn't happen. I'm just telling you, that's where I went. I went to the assessor's office and said, do you have any records of anything like that? And they said, it doesn't happen. Whether they're afraid of precedent, because they have so many properties across the state, and I don't know. Or maybe their business model is, I could give sixty-five thousand for a police officer, or sixty-five thousand for another faculty member to try to help control the issue. I'm not, I don't know, I'm just saying, if they were sitting right here and we asked the question, I know if I was in their chair, I'd say I'd rather spend sixty-five thousand on faculty than on a police officer. And how could you beat me up for that? Don't get me, I'm not saying whether it's true or not, but I mean, how are you gonna attack someone that says, I think putting the money towards the care of the individual and trying to keep them from getting out- Now, you're saying, take sixty-five thousand from my budget so I can pay for a police officer to chase the guy after he left, and now I have one less faculty member to help keep him from getting out. It's a hard balance. And if you don't know all the details of the budget and all the details of the faculty and the staff, which you'll never get, it's very difficult to sit there and have that discussion about money regards to the, the children versus actually more the procedures and why is it continuing and what can we do to help them and what can they do to help us? We've really been trying to focus on communication between the, the police department specifically and Stetson. We made some progress. We still have a lot of ways to go. In my perspective is, you really have two paths you can take. And you can take them in parallel. You don't have to just choose one or the other, but you can go legal. Learn all the rules and regs and then find out how much it costs and then go after them. Or you can try to get them back at the table and work on it without the legal being the thing keeping you from actually bridging the gap. My recommendation is we pursue what the legal would cost and the effort involved, but we still continue to just say, can we sit at the table? We still haven't resolved the issue. What more can we do together? What more can Stetson do? What more can we do so we can try to get better at this? Um, I would suggest this and kinda gonna throw you under the bus, Andrew. Not really throw him under the bus. I'm just gonna throw a lot at him that he's not expecting.
Sharpen that pencil.
Anybody that's in a butter. Put up no trespassing signs. Check in with Andrew. I've, I've asked Andrew to see if he can just make sure we know what the legal requirements are on a no trespassing sign. I believe there's something about needing to put contact information for the property owner. It's gotta be every twenty feet or two-hundred feet. I don't know. But do it. And there's two reasons for that. One is, the student's not gonna care. He's, he's running. Or she. Is that a he and a she? That's just a he, right? That's only male only. In today's PC world, I just realized I was like, maybe I made a mistake and I threw in something, but anyway.
They still could identify a she.
Good point. So, there you go. Anyway.
Take it away.
It's the faculty running into the backyard after them. If they cross that sign without calling the owner at a minimum or calling the police department explaining what they're doing, we have strength now legally to explain that they're not communicating properly. And I'm not necessarily against faculty following the student to, as long as I got eyes on, they're, that's what they're doing. If it was your kid, you're not gonna say, oh, not my yard and just stop and let your kid keep running off into the woods. But because they are not their kids, they are faculty. They are assigned something. Their responsibility as they're crossing that line is to pick up the phone and call dispatch to say, if anybody's here, please let them know why I'm in their backyard. At least maybe that might assist with some of the abutters that might have the reverse nine-one-one, at least going, at least I know why someone's crawling through my yard. And secondly, the faculty should never walk into someone's garage or wa, it's only if you're going through the yard. You start poking into places or looking in windows, you've made a mistake. That's the police's job. And I think some of these would help with some of the abutters' concerns because at least the communications everywhere like, even if you see someone before you get the call, hopefully you're getting the call within thirty seconds anyway. And you're like, oh, at least now I know why he's here. And it's not the assumption that we always make, which right now is at Stetson, but at least this verifies it. And it's not some other random person running through your property doing things that you wish you wasn't in there for and things like that. I also believe that we can make further steps with the concept of that acuity rating the police chief was talking about and Stetson was talking about where if they know the child left, but the child has no true violent history, they're just scared or they're whatever. The way we notify the public might be different than if it truly is somebody that they think might actually have violent tendencies. One might be stay away. One might be, the child may be afraid. Please don't approach as you may just make the issue worse. But we do not see any reason to fear for violence or something that they can put in and we've gotta work the words out. I, that's where I'm coming from and I think that may help because we do know that, at least my understanding is probably seventy-five percent of the students there are not the type you need to worry about running into your yard and stealing. But the ones that do run away might be a greater percentage. That might be fifty-fifty. I don't know. But I just think we need to work on that process so that if, if the faculty really do know, it's a twelve-year-old kid that's just got mad because we wouldn't let him punch his neighbor or whatever and he took off. But you know what? They can make a different judgment. Like if you have two boys, you kinda know when one takes off and he's mad and he just needs to let some steam off. Sometimes you let him run and then you bring him back and he's calmed down. The other guy, you don't let him run because he's gonna go and break stuff. I don't know. One, I'm not a parent. I'm just putting out examples from my perspective. But I think we wanna keep working that.
I agree, except believe me, once they're running, their people change when they run. They get desperate.
There is that.
You cannot say.
Fight or flight.
Yeah, just because a kid wasn't violent and he was fourteen years old when he left, but now all of a sudden he sees a car with keys and boy, might be, maybe he could get where he wants to. That changes the ball, ballgame, you know? And, and we all know even boys without problems, all kids who are teenagers, don't have fully developed powers of being able to control impulses.
And that's a good point, too.
And so, you know, I, I have been more frightened by the staff persons on my property than the boys, very frankly, and had more trouble with them.
And that's something I think that is just unacceptable.
Yeah.
So, hopefully we can also get that message across so they understand that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lucy. Is there anything else that anybody would like on this topic?
Yeah, as, as the conversation was going on, I'm sure you all realize that the actions of those schools and that school or that area, the relationship to the abutters is gonna, over time, if it doesn't get resolved, it's gonna start, uh, making the real estate values in those areas less and less and less.
It's similar to what Lucy brought up earlier about houses being sold in her neighborhood that.
And it's gonna make, it's gonna negatively affect our, the town's bottom line. So, without any, without changing or without doing whatever needs to be done, it's gonna be, it's gonna cost the rest of us more taxes to cover the taxes that are lost on those properties.
I can't, I agree with that, I should say. I can't deny it. I agree.
Yep, for sure.
Either of you got anything more?
Please, Lucy.
All right, so, we have a common vic's license application renewal. What is this one? Or transfer of ownership?
Uh, it's a, just a new.
Common Vic, entertainment license.
Yeah.
For Dunkin' Donuts.
Late September.
So, it's a renewal?
It's a renewal, but it's actually new owner from the previous year. They had, they, they didn't get the application form because they had changed owners.
Oh.
Didn't notify us.
Didn't notify us, so then they realized that they didn't have the application or that they never got the renewal form because it went to the old or the one that we had on file. So, once they figured that out, we gave them the.
Nice to call you Nick, so.
Give the application. So, it's a renewal, but under new.
Just throw that in.
New entity.
Is that kinda skipping a step?
It's kinda do with those.
There was never truly a transfer of ownership? It's almost like it's, it's gone and you gotta start over.
Right. But it's an annual.
Huh?
It's a different franchise. So, the new franchisee rather than, they probably, when they took it over at some point last year, probably should have submitted a new common vic and entertainment license transfer. But since the other one lapsed, they're essentially transferring and applying, and applying for a new one at the same time.
They better know how nice we are by letting them do that. Because I don't think we would've had to let them do that.
No. We also need to come up with a fine schedule. People miss their deadlines on these, especially in business like this.
Do we have one?
Fine, for fines? No.
It might be something we wanna look into.
Usually just try to catch them when they apply for new parts. Usually the Board of Health is more, you know, we kind of do the common vics and responsible Board of Health licenses. Because normally those are tied to state permits, too. That's usually how we catch the outliers.
So, the respective entertainment license is the television, cable TV.
It might be a video game in there. I don't remember. No, of course, no video game. I think the pizza shop has one. Pizza shop has video game. They don't have any.
No Kino though? Just television?
Just television.
I'm amazed that somebody needs an entertainment license to put a TV in their building, but apparently they do. See, I can be mean. Why'd you miss one? And then be like, why do we have to ask them to do that? But, um, I'm inconsistent, I guess. I have no problems with this. I just had those questions. What are your guys' thoughts?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve Dunkin' Donuts particular license and the entertainment license.
No, I'm second.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Perhaps we deliver that with a suggestion that they try to be mindful of it next year.
Do we have a?
Um, I was having some computer issues, so tried to print out the common vic one, so have that one.
I'll have you sign that later.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, once, after the meeting, what I do, what I'll do is I'll go in there and hit the accept button in the permanent system and automatically sends them a copy of the license with the signatures on it. So, really the signature pages for the enrolled records.
You took my, and created a digital signature of mine and you just throw it on permits and give it to them?
Automatically generates them.
I just meant, how do you get that and give it to them? How do you get my signature on their thing?
So, it's pre, it's pre, it's already on the digital, uh, one that gets sent out.
So, there's a scan of my signature that's in the software?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thought we talked about that already a few weeks ago or months ago.
Yeah, so we back it, so we back it up with.
Well, I didn't realize that part. I thought the whole application was. I didn't know the signed one.
Oh, no.
Otherwise, why am I signing?
When we're doing all the.
Hard one on file in case they need them.
Once we approved it, last time we approved it, he said, once you guys approve them, I can send them out through the computer because it generated with the signature and we could sign that hard copy.
I missed that part of it.
It, it's not a surprise to me, so I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I'm just not a big fan of my signature being digitally used because this world, I have no control over digital. This, who knows where it goes from there? So, I'm just letting you know that's why I'm asking. Okay, so that was both the common vic's license and entertainment license for LCJS Donut Sync. The next one is special event permit for the Christmas in Berry. Anything change in Sandy?
Nothing's changed. All that changes is dates.
Which one is it this year? What's that date?
It'll be on the seventh.
December seventh?
That was the first Saturday of summer. We're done with getting that policy.
All right, thank you.
Right here. Just saying.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, it's.
It started electronically. It looks different.
Yep.
Yeah, they took that.
All right, there it is. The back page shows the details. Um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant permission for the Christmas in Berry committee to form an event under Barry Conan.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have another request, uh, use of town property by the Band of Voices. Um, that's again.
You don't really need.
June fifteenth, Saturday for the concert, Wednesday, June fifth, and June twelfth for pre-concert rehearsals. This is the use of Town Hall.
Times are free. We verify it, I assume?
Yes.
Making motion, we approve the use of Town Hall as listed here for their concerts for the Band of Voices.
I have a second.
Is that the same time as the library run?
No.
It's in June, right, that they do that library run? I know it lined up with the Berry Family Fun Day thing last year. It was on the same day and it was in June.
They have concerts at night in.
Oh, it's not a bad thing. I was just saying, more activity that day might be good. Do something during the day, get something in the evening.
The library run is usually like a Father's Day weekend, I believe, so.
That's my take, yeah.
Fifteenth, I believe, so.
Sixteenth is Father's Day, so yeah. It'd be the day before. Oh, good. It'd be a nice busy weekend.
Did we do the motion part?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Can I take that?
Yeah. You can just call that out in your.
Yeah, so, um, the lib, one thing that wasn't on the agenda was that the library is requesting appointment of, uh, Kayla Phillips to the position of library assistant. Uh, this is to backfill a position that was vacated, uh, by the individual who had stepped down from the youth services librarian position into a library assistant position and has decided to leave, um, her position. But there's also a second position in the, or a second library assistant position. They'll be vacated for a few weeks due to a, uh, due to a pregnancy. So, she'll be filling in for the vacated times and that person's times in her absence.
I recall we did something, somebody was leaving one position, going to another position at a full-time pace instead of part-time. And the conversation was that we're gonna wipe out two part-time positions to make that full-time.
That was in the transition to the, well, it was a full-time library assistant position. In the, in the next year's budget, that position is being reclassified as a, seen as a adult services librarian. So, it's, this, this isn't that same position. This is a different, uh, this is a different person that's still a part-time only position.
Because as I understood, we were deleting two positions to put them in that new position.
Right, but that.
This isn't either of those two positions.
This is not either of those positions. This is still the straight-up library assistant position.
Okay. Just wanna make sure of that.
Yeah, this isn't.
So, it gets, I just.
No, this isn't creating any, any new positions or, or changing any staffing levels. It's simply swapping one for one and then getting somebody new in there before there's an anticipated.
Well, she has a budget. She has to stay within, so.
Could you, um, ask them to notify us when they learn that somebody is leaving a position and request to post to fill the position as any other department would? Um, they are not separate from any other department when it comes to getting paid by the town's budget to pay them to work as an employee. They cannot arbitrarily
Fire.
Just have people roll through without telling us until the last second, oh, by the way, I got this person. Because we, now we're asking all these questions because we have no history of when the person left that this person's filling. Because we, now we're asking all these questions, 'cause we have no history of when the person left, that this person's filling. They should be able to send you an email the day they learn someone left, and then suggest their plan of how to fill that position, so we know what's going on.
I'll take responsibility for not forwarding that to your attention.
Thank you. Um, I mean, prior, it used to be the, could we advertise for the position? I don't even know if we advertised.
Uh, we did. We did. This position was advertised, so, I, again, I'll take the, by the, by the library, I do have all the records on the advertising. As I said, I will take the responsibility for not informing you guys, or allowing them to, to do their, and process with the lib, uh, on the authority of the library trustees. So.
But the trustees aren't paying the salary we are. So just in the future, please, um, so, so we know.
Yep.
That's, that's
I appreciate it.
That's why the awkward questions and the not understanding.
Nope, that's fine.
And thank you, no, I, we better understand.
Yeah, thank you for opening up to it.
Yes.
It's, it's important, and I appreciate straightforward, understanding what happened is, um.
Stephanie then may not have liked you, had you not done that.
Exactly. I'm not supposed to know anybody other than us. We were on the same, we were on the same page together, I just failed to notify you guys.
No, I appreciate it, thank you. Um. We have a motion?
Make a motion that we, um, approve the wager authorization for Kayla Phillips as library assistant.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Any of the selectmen have anything else that they wanna present under their own report, or?
No, I've had a busy week or two in other ventures, so.
You Charlie?
No.
You got anything else you wanna bring from the town administrator's office?
No, that wasn't already in the report.
Um. I'd just like to put it out there, spread the word. I'm still wondering how many people in town might actually be interested in the hemp industry, not necessarily the recreational cannabis-type in, industry, or medicinal side. Hemp can be medicinal, so let's fly in line there. I'm talking about the non-THC-containing cannabis products. Um. Federal government has pretty much pulled all regulation away that was there only months ago, which has opened the door for various states to start getting into it. I know that Massachusetts, Vermont, couple other states already have people trying to, uh, get started on that. I will admit that I see that as a benefit for some of the farmers, because of the type of plant it is. I would like to know how many might be interested, if anybody's interest actually is to the point where we should start creating some community groups to, uh, further advance that. Get others in, that might help explain what it takes, whether you wanna be a farmer, a processor, a manufacturer, a distributor. Multi-levels to this, I think some of the biggest things Massachusetts could use would be processing, manufacturing type. Um. And I do believe our town could actually accommodate similar if we could, if we had people interested, so, I'm just putting it out there. Reach out to the town administrator's office or any of the selectmen, and if you have that, we can make sure we share it, so we can try to bring it in. We brought it up to the, uh, regional planner that I believe Hardwick hired. It's something that he's brought some information forward with, but to actually take the contacts he started to try to build and bring them here, we need someone that wants to listen to them. So we don't wanna take all that extra step unless we can start getting some feedback on the potential. And again, I'm looking for feedback at any level of the industry that you may feel an interest in. Other than that, nothing. I'm just trying to continue to pursue economic development opportunities.
I just have one more thing to add.
Yeah.
I forgot, I forgot to mention before. As long as you're all done with that.
I'm all done with it.
Okay.
It was a, a, please let us know.
Um, I received the resignation of Tyler Howard as our videographer, um, yesterday, so, um, I, I talked to Rick Deion about how we wanna try to address that position, whether or not there's, there might be a different way that we wanna attack that position moving forward, um, potentially training a number of people in the role of videographer, even though we only have the one camera set, ha- keeping that here and almost doing it as like a rotating basis to say, hey, we have a meeting coming up, who is available to cover it? And then having that available, um, so I'd like to try to start that process of identifying multiple people to fill that role, if that's something that you guys think would be beneficial. Considering it's only at a per-hour basis.
I'm okay with it, but I also think it'd be worth asking the high school
Right.
if they're interested to see if they have students that would like to be that. So we just have one point of contact at the high school, and they reach out to their four or five people that they've brought into an audiovisual club, or whatever they got going, and then that might actually work towards community service, and actually, we don't necessarily have to pay them, but if they put in three hours four times, they've got their community service in, or whatever the hours are, and
Right, I, I like the fact of trying to keep the equipment here, so that we can train multiple people, so that way say there is an event that, you know, let's say that's, you know, nobody's really interested in covering, but somebody really wants to be, wants to have covered, they could say, well, I'd like to sign out the equipment. I'm trained to use it, I'm gonna set it up, and I'll give the, give you guys the video of it at the end, so.
I'm comfortable with that concept.
It at least gives us
As long as you dot the i's, cross the t's in the process, that makes sense.
I think it doesn't hurt to have multiple users, too, and if somebody does wanna do it, and just to have a backup for occasionally goodness is wise anyways, so. So, I think it's a good idea.
Um, yeah, I'd like to, I have to review at least what we have for our job description on that, probably bring forward something a little bit more formal at your next meeting, but I thought I had to bring that to, to your attention now.
Great. Maybe see if thought came to me, I don't know if it makes sense or not. But on that whole concept of, like, an AV club, audiovisual club, or something like that, if they're interested in, it might be worth it for us to look into investing in it. I don't think it'd be a lot. It'd be more like the one-time thing you gotta pay like every so many years. We have certain events where people could go with, one person could play the, the camera person, one plays the interviewer. And you have a Berry, Berry Family Fun Day, and this two-person team goes out and just interviews people, and it just gets recorded and potentially put on the channel. You know, or a sporting event where they're walking around through the stands and saying, what do you think about your? And so we could possibly expand and grow on that, and it would be another way of sharing not only what's going on in town with people over the TV, but it's us sharing with the school and helping give them an opportunity to actually do things live and kinda practice that concept. I don't know if they think that that cognitive level, that's what they do, I, I forget what I did in high school. But I do believe we had people in high school that did that. I just can't recall, 'cause I wasn't one of those people.
What's the reason why the person who is doing this job decided to turn in his resignation?
Um, because he's gonna be going off to college.
Excuse me?
Is, 'cause he's focusing more on his studies. That's what he said in his resignation.
I didn't know if it was a compensation.
I think he's just getting too old.
Alright, no.
He's
Sometimes
I think it's, I think it's becoming more of a hassle than, than what the pay is worth, and
Sometimes the compensation might be increased, and they might get a new, a, a, a new level of attention if all of a sudden the rate was, uh, one, a more than, substantially more than they're paying. Sometimes they get re-interested, say, wow, I didn't know that.
But I do think it's a good time to review what our operations are, and see if we can improve on it, so.
I think a little
I don't know, I was just
Yeah, agreed.
I was just wondering why they decide to leave. I know if I, if I hire someone to do a project, and all of a sudden someone, someone else is doing a similar project in another town, and they're paid a lot more, oftentimes if I don't have a relationship with this contractor, the contractor just loses interest. And then you find them next, next year, uh, working for another entity.
But we originally created this position for the expected turnover of a student level. We, we weren't allocating money for an hourly rate where we're bringing in an adult that professionally produces things.
What do you pay this guy, anyway?
I think we moved it all the way up to twelve dollars or something the last time.
All the way up?
You know, it's
Isn't twelve dollars minimum wage, and Bernie Sanders is
It was minimum wage, but he had worked for so long, he actually earned another dollar or something. It was like an odd little
I think it was still a little, or twelve bucks an hour.
So, but the point was, we, the position was primarily created to give people that chance to get started and figure out if they like it, not to stick with the town forever. So Tyler moves on, it means somebody else has the opportunity now, but Andrew's actually presenting an idea that makes sense, where it's not just one person gets the opportunity. You might be able to get a crowd, and then if somebody's not there, or if we wanna cover more events, we can cover more events, because now you got people hey, I love whatever goes down at Felton Field, so they'll bring the camera every time, but some people like, I love the basketball games or the football games, and they'll go do that, and maybe we get more coverage, and we get more things we can put on the TV by opening up the number of people that can run the camera and know how to work with, uh, Rich Deion and the production process. 'Cause I don't know how we transfer the information, but I'm sure it's a download and send it somewhere.
Basically have to set a minimum training requirement that they have to go through before they're eligible to sign stuff out, so.
Maybe we give them a little certificate, so they can tell somebody else, I know how to run this type of camera.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I move adjourned.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody.